I go ahead to start. Commissioner Yauer?
Here.
Commissioner Rosales?
Here.
Judge Shaw's here. Commissioner Shenhart will not be here today. Commissioner Hummel?
Here.
And Carol Sweets with the county clerk's office, here. Will you please stand and join me in my prayer?
Dear Lord, please take care of our military wherever they may be. Please bring them back safe to their families, take care of their families. Please bring us rain as you think we need it. And please help us make the best decisions for the county. Amen.
I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Five citizens to care? Just one. Karen O'Beala?
And I realize I'm not a citizen, but...
You're fine Karen.
It's the only place I could not ask. I just wanted to come today and remind you that we're working on the ACOG application for solid waste. And the applications are due on April the 16th. And so what I've done is put together the application. I'd like to give each of you a copy of it. I know you really can't make any decisions or anything because of where I'm at. But it will need to be signed by the judge before the 16th. Y'all can look through it. And I'll give you the original also before I leave today. I've got it with me. And then perhaps we'll do it as a ratification at the next meeting. And we'll need to pass the resolution. But basically, just kind of wanted to go through it with you and let you know...
Wait Karen, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Before the 16th of this month, this needs to be signed.
Correct.
So we can have another meeting to sign this. We can't. I'm just asking so...
I don't, I don't really see having another meeting. You can just ratify it at the next meeting. Ratify your signature and do the resolution. But that is up to you. That would be your decision.
Thank you.
However y'all feel about that. But basically, just applying to do one household hazardous waste collection event to also include tires and e-waste. The amount that I'm requesting is seventeen, or that y'all are requesting, I'm sorry, because this is the county's application, would be $17,775. The cash match that shows is $2,000. And that's the money that San Antonio River Authority will provide you to be able to do this project. So the total cost would be like $19,775. And then there is some in-kind that's mentioned there. And I just kind of went back through the last application and just looked at what we had given the last time. And actually took a lot of it away. But just so you know, because the amount of funding has gone down tremendously, they're really looking at in-kind and things like that. And so on page, I'm trying to find it. I know I didn't remember the pages. But after forms, it's Form 7A detailed matching funds and in-kind services towards about five or six pages from the end. We say that we're going to give in-kind services in a total amount of $3,0546, showing if we can get 10 volunteers for that day. And that's just the value of volunteers. So, and then as far as Karnes County employees, one coordinator, that would be Commissioner Hummel. He's been helping me coordinate this, this event. As well as, you know, he'll continue to work with me through the event. If we can get two emergency management team members and a law enforcement officer. And those are just the values. And then of course, the River Authority employee is myself. So, you know, we would just want to try to get that many people there. Last year, we, we put some numbers in there. We weren't, we didn't get exactly what, you know, we said we would. But this is just approximately. And this is just people who would be involved in, at least on the day of the event, and know what's going on on that day and be ready to help should we need them. And then of course, we went into supplies and things like that. One of the things that I need to mention is that we were gonna, we're gonna go ahead and order some more of the banners and things like that. And we just need to make sure this year that we have someplace to put them after the event so that we can save them and reuse them every year rather than having to pay for them every year. So, and then we usually get t-shirts for the people who volunteer. And that's all part of the grant also. And so I just wanted to make sure that you guys all had a copy of it. And like I said, I'll leave the original. It needs to be signed by yourself, Judge, and also by Luana before the 16th. And, and then also a resolution will need to be signed before May the 2nd, which Carl already has and he's working on. And we intend to present at the May, the end of the, end of the month meeting, April the 30th, I think it is. This is the original. So, you know, y'all will let me know. I'd really like to take the signed application with me today if I can so that I can get it delivered to ACOG for you because it's due to their office by 10:00 a.m. Monday morning. And I'm going out of town Thursday and Friday.
Bob, can we sign it and then ratify it? Or do we have to...
You can, but it's not the proper procedure. You should have just called them, they have another meeting. I mean, I'd plan to come in for extra, but you have to have...
And it's just a grant application, you know, a grant application. If you decide after you get the grant that you don't want it, you can always say no. So that's why it's not such a big deal about the signature being ratified or actually approved prior to. That, we do that all the time, you know, as at the River Authority, as do other organizations I work with. So I just, we weren't able to get the application put together in time. We weren't sure if we were going to make it by today. So that's the reason we didn't want to put it on there.
The county would really not spend any money.
No, exactly.
Well, it's not always intended for today.
Right, right. So you can't, can't make a decision here. That's what I'm saying. But, but it can be ratified if she, she signs it with the resolution.
They won't sign it or not.
Right.
Which they can't do.
Well, yeah, I mean, the judge can. She, I mean...
But who does that have to go to?
Huh?
Who does that go to?
At ACOG.
I know, but to who?
At ACOG? Who at ACOG? It's Georgia Zanaris. But I mean, like I said, she's just gonna want the resolution by May the 2nd. And which, the resolution can be done next, next meeting if we're gonna perform it.
What is it, Kirby? Well, what, the way...
Because the application has to be signed in her office by the 16th. Yes, sir.
Thank you Karen.
No problem.
Number six is reading on the desk. I can't hear you. I wrote it down. Just I wrote it. I'm looking at my screen.
Yeah, I got it. Right here, okay.
Yeah, it's on top.
No, that's what I'm trying to do.
I said it here somewhere.
Karen, will you just give me that?
It's probably right. I got it right.
Never mind.
Thank you.
Is that it? Do you have any questions? Is there anything else?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
That's gonna be for seven?
Yep. The court minutes for the month of March 2012, March 13, 22nd, and 30th.
I second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposition? Motion carries. Number eight, acknowledgment on record that the San Antonio Food Bank will be in Fall City at the Holy Trinity Catholic Church, located at 211 East Meyer Street in Fall City, Texas on April 25th, 2012. Distribution will begin at 10:30.
Judge?
Ma'am?
If it was too high.
I've already contacted the school about that. And that's testing day. So the, the high school children will not be able to help us this year or this month. So any volunteers would be great. They appreciate it.
And we'll ask our kids.
Yeah, well, I know when they were in there in November, December, we had high school kids, but it's testing that week, so they can't get out. So we just need some more help. Thank you.
Number nine on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, proclaiming the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Karnes County. And that's Jennifer. Hey Jennifer, how are you?
Great. One of the shop mistresses. April is observed across the U.S. as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. Sexual assault is of ongoing concern on a national, state, and local level. Nationally, someone is assaulted, sexually assaulted every two minutes. On a state level, in Texas, one in five women and one in 20 men will experience a sexual assault sometime during their lifetime. And locally, the family violence shelter provides services for residents of Guadalupe, Gonzales, Karnes, and Wilson Counties. In 2010, in those four jurisdictions alone, over 100 sexual assaults were reported to law enforcement. So I've brought a proclamation today. Would the court like me to read the proclamation? Whereas two minutes, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted. And in Texas, one in five women and one in 20 men are victims of sexual assault. Whereas according to a study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin School of Social Work, approximately 1.9 million Texans have been sexually victimized. Whereas most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, and only 70% of rapes are ever reported to the police. Whereas it is appropriate to salute the more than 20 million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. Whereas national and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Whereas police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that resolve in the prosecution and incarceration of the offenders. Whereas sexual assault is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round. And in order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas national and community organizations, businesses in the private sector, and the media urge through National Sexual Assault Awareness of sexual violence and strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault. Now therefore, we the undersides do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Karnes County. And all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideas of victims and thus working towards awareness and prevention and by participating in community efforts.
She, we have a proclamation to sign. If y'all allow me to execute it. I put it on the cotton bound paper and it's out there. But I, we did one for you on Friday night.
Okay.
So it's out there.
Okay.
Where you just select me.
The motion needs to include that the judge be, what the right to sign.
I make a, I make a motion to approve proclaiming the month of April as National Sexual Assault and Awareness and Prevention Month in Karnes County and authorize the county judge to sign the proclamation.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are actually two proclamations, correct?
No, opposition.
I only have one.
No, I mean, it's the one for sexual, and then there's one of child abuse.
That's me, yes.
Number 10 is...
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm gonna get that for you Jennifer. Yeah, give me a second.
Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Number 10 on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Karnes County. We did another one for me on cotton bound paper. We left them, I, I put them out there in folders. But we will be reading that proclamation in the Kennedy Park on Friday, April 20th. Friday, April 20th, at 9:00 a.m. And we'll be at the city park in Kennedy. And all the children and schools will be there. And we can just read that one in. I don't, I mean, y'all have your own packages, but I've got the pretty ones up here, so...
Just a motion. I make a motion to approve proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Karnes County. Allow the county judge to execute.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries. I'll, I'll give them mine. Thank you. Number 11 is to, on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, allowing Karnes County Road and Bridge to use county equipment to dig a burn pit at the citizens' collection station or to hire an independent contractor to do the same job. And that's Jane.
I wanted to, well, ask the commissioners court here. And ask Jeff, where's Jeff, wherever. If we could, if we could use, utilize county equipment to dig a burn pit. I know it was a while back that we had mentioned that we wouldn't use the, like, the county guys or county equipment to do anything like that. But by using, by using this, the dozen, if you dig this burn pit, we can start burning over there. Hopefully, we can start burning way toward the back, way over there toward the back. And we'll save the county a lot of money. Now, I called before, before I called Jeff, before I called Jeff to do this, which was a few weeks ago or a month ago. And I'm gonna be straight up with everybody here in court. Before I called Jeff, I called Luana and I asked Luana if we had any money in the... We couldn't move anything within line items. Remember that Luana? And you, you mentioned we didn't have any money we could do that. And I said, well, maybe we could amend it, amend it. But I wasn't sure if it was an emergency item or not. I mean, to me, it's an emergency because, you know, we're over there and Jesse's having a hard time with everyone over there. And he, you know, he has a hard time. We talk every other day or something, or every three or four days. And he has a lot of trouble over there. So before I did anything to go over there and ask Jeff or anything, I asked Luana first. And then we talked about amending the budget. And I wasn't sure if we could do it or anything. So I had, before that, I already had, I'm sorry, I'm stepping over and saying, I had called HR Burey. And I had told HR Burey, go ahead and go dig the pit. And I said, oh man, I better call to see if I have the money in there to do it, right? So I called Luana and I poured Luana and said, we didn't have it. So I called HR and I told me, I'm sorry, man. I go, you know, I overstepped it. I figured you could go and do it. I go, but we don't have money right now. Let me talk to Jeff. So I went ahead and I called Jeff and I asked, Jeff, I, I mean, could you step up, please? Sorry about that. And I went ahead and I called Jeff and I asked you if you had time to do it. And you said that you would do it first thing Monday morning. Is, I mean, is that what you told me?
Yes, sir.
And did you complain that, I know you have a lot of work to do. I know you have a lot of work to do. You're overwhelmed with work and everything. But me and you talked about the situation and everything. And I believe if you would have not been able to do it or didn't have the time, you would have told me and I wouldn't have got upset. Have I ever got upset with you?
No. It wouldn't take that long to do it.
Right.
But it's gonna be up to y'all. And that's why I said, let's bring it up to commissioners court. And, you know, y'all make the decision on that. We are a county. I think we need to try to kind of work together on this and try to, you know, get the problem solved.
Right.
I think three hours, I should have a pit dug, you know, and go back to where I was at. You know, but it's up to y'all.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Judge, with all due respect, with all due respect. But if you would have had a problem with it, wouldn't have you told me about it right away?
Yeah.
You would have told me no right away, right? Okay. I told Jesse, we're gonna start doing that. And we're gonna start taking care of that. Start separating whatever we have to separate and everything. And I called you back a couple of weeks later and told you why you hadn't done it, right? I said, hey Jeff, why, why hadn't you done it? What did you tell me? Why hadn't you done it?
I said, uh, talk to the judge and judge told me not to do it, that I should stay on the road. So that's what I did.
Okay, now I'm reverting like my, my face toward you. And I'm sorry Judge, but... I don't know, we were, we were set, we were, we assigned each other these jobs, right? To take care of these jobs and everything? And I'm not throwing you under the boulder. I'm asking this in front of commissioners court. Under what authority did you have to stop what I already had started?
Because when Jeff asked me, he said, I'm gonna dig that pit. And everybody's been pulling Jeff off their Road and Bridge administrator duties. So I asked Bob. And then I called Tac and I asked them. I said, is one commissioner supposed to be able to do that? Or is it supposed to be the commissioners of the whole? And they said, when you give anybody, like, he has Road and Bridge doc duties and his job is defined by statute. And anytime you take him out of statute, you need commissioners court action or it's illegal. And that's the only reason.
Well, when you knew that and you stopped him, I would have been okay with that. Why didn't you call me and let me know what you were doing?
He could, if you guys talk, I'm not gonna do that whole thing or that court thing.
But we're commissioners court. We run, we run the county.
Right.
We need to be coincide with each other.
But it needs to be done openly.
I don't come over here to your office and do something and stop something, progress in your office and then I call you. I would never do that. Who's next? Are you next? Are you next?
But you can't, you can't give him duty outside of statute.
I didn't give him a, I didn't give him a duty.
He just moved furniture in the past.
I asked him.
Had they not without commissioners court of authority approval, whatever you're saying. They had gone over there to the annex and built the little warning. But that was not on the agenda.
And, and that's why I asked...
If he's in charge of that, I'm thinking...
Okay Carl, but wait a second. That's why I asked Tac. Anytime you take somebody out of their statutory duties, okay? One person can't do that. And just because historically it's been done, doesn't make it wrong.
If you wanna call Tac every time we need to do something.
The only reason I ask Carl is, do you have any Road and Bridge complaints?
Tac is not running this county.
Do you know how many Road and Bridge complaints we get?
Yes.
And everybody's complaining about Jeff not being on Road and Bridge duties?
Well, like he said, this is, we were talking about two or three hours, one man, two or three hours.
But my, my concern Judge, I'm...
I mean, this is a big deal. We're, we got TCEQ that falls under the guidelines.
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. If that's what, if that's what...
From now, it's been closed since when?
We've been out of compliance. We've been out of compliance. We've been out of compliance of the dump for over six months with TCEQ.
This is not on the agenda, Judge.
I know, but it's been out of compliance that long.
It's not on the agenda.
On number, on number 11, since it's my line item. I mean, like, when the judge puts something on there like that, there's been many, many times that she goes off of the agenda and we still keep answering. She called the public without them being signed up or anything like that. And no disrespect, Mr. Busman, I love you to death, but, uh, Mr., you know that, you founded me. But this one here, the judge has called out a lot of things like that and she's not on the agenda, so I'm gonna keep going on this. Look, just the only thing that I found disrespectful were y'all assigned this job to me. And me and Jesse gives out 150% of it. Jesse gives out more. I've seen him all upset up there and everything because there's things that we just can't do. Jesse is the best guy, I think, for the job. You know, he, he does way over, way over what he has to do out there. But the only thing that I found disrespectful, and I wouldn't do that to none of y'all. I'm not just telling it to none of y'all or anything to Tracy here. I'm not gonna go over there, once I assign, we assign each other something and overstep my boundaries. Because I think you overstepped your boundaries. You could have called me and asked me.
I called you a couple of times.
No, no, no.
And I text you a few times.
Yeah, but that was when I was on vacation. We're talking about when you stopped Jeff. You didn't call me when you stopped Jeff.
Well, look, we got, we got a huge problem there.
You text me when, you text me when you stopped Jeff.
No, I did not.
No, you did not. You did not. But I, I don't know, but...
I called you. I called you about the...
So if we're, if we're assigned to something Judge, I wanna know right now, Mr. Busman. I wanna know, if we're assigned to something, can the judge still come over here and tell us what to do once we're assigned to something?
Jeff has statutory duties.
I understand that. But like Carl said, we've done it before. We've done other things before.
Historically, if you do something historically, it doesn't make it legal and doesn't make it right.
So every time somebody steps...
I was in charge of the courthouse restoration. So I was a liaison. And if I have something going on, can you supersede me and just call him up and say?
For what I don't know.
Carl, you called me all morning that morning. I went back, you had a quarrel there.
This is ridiculous.
And I'm not, I'm not getting mad Judge. I'm not, I'm not upset or I'm not mad with you. Because we gotta work together and I would never shame the county to where I'm, don't think, I don't want none of y'all to think that I can't work with the judge. I can work with the judge. My problem is that we're all up here and we sit equals, five equal votes. I don't see as none of y'all my boss, nor the judge, or none of y'all. And I'm not y'all's boss. We sit up here as equals. I would not do that to y'all. I would not go try to squash y'all. And I'm telling y'all right now, right now Judge, all of y'all, y'all are not gonna squash me. I'm not here to get squashed by nobody.
Jeff takes it.
We are the leaders of the community. We have to be respectful. I'm not yelling and screaming and embarrassing the county ground. Even though I'm a little bit upset, I'm sure y'all can, y'all notice that. But the thing is, I wanna know, Mr. Busman, can she supersede us anytime she feels like it?
Well, I think the situation that exists with Jeff, Jeff is there under a statutory. He was, was voted in, the unison was voted in. Under that system, Jeff is assigned certain duties by the law.
Yes, sir.
And I think if, if that is changed, it cannot be changed by any one of y'all.
And that, that's fine.
Including the judge. But you can't, you can't pull him off and have him do something that would be illegal for him to do without somebody saying, hey, you can't do that. And that could happen.
I understand.
So what, what was happening, at least the way I see it, what was happening is that the judge was saying, hey, you can't do that because it's illegal. And she, and she stopped it.
That's fine.
And I think any one of you could have done that.
I could have been called Judge. And I would have told, oh, I'm sorry Judge. And you could have, like I always tell you, show me the stats, show it to me in black and white. I'm not just gonna take, I'm sorry, Mr. Busman. I don't just take anybody's word for it. I wanna see it in black and white. And I told you that Judge, oh yeah Judge, and once you show it to me, you prove it to me, you show it to me in black and white and you've done it before. I apologize. I go, okay Judge, well, I'm sorry, whatever. And then we keep on going.
But James, I have been calling you. You said your phone's broke.
No, that's when I was on vacation. Don't jump the gun. This happened two weeks before. You did not call me before. I can pull my records out. You did not call me the day that you told me that she shut you down. I did not get any calls from you. Out of respect and equality, because we're equal up here. Out of equality, nobody's, you're not my boss, I'm not your boss. Out of that, you should have called me and told me, James, you're making a mistake. And I would, you know, I would have said, Judge, okay, no problem. I'm sorry, show it to me in black and white. And we would have kept going. And I know he's busy on the roads, but if anybody would have had a problem with it, Jeff could have told me, I can't do it. I don't see where, I wouldn't, you know, you know my situation here, it's that, my situation here is that I thought we had to talk to each other, you know, we, you know, not just go try to push someone around.
I only stopped him for one reason, okay? He cannot take direction from individual Commissioners.
I understand.
And that's, that's what it says by road and bridge statute, it has to be a court. And I told Jeff that, I said, "Jeff," and he says, "Well, I get phone calls from this one and this one." I said, "We have to do it as the five of us," or, I mean, even this one.
To dig a hole?
You can't take them off statutory duties. You can't take them off statutory duties, Carl.
Really? Well, what about this hazardous waste collection event that I'm gonna have? I cannot use road and bridge employees to help me with that?
Carl, you're not-
Did you do it the last time?
Yes.
Can you take-
She was already judged.
Now, you just opened a big can of worms.
She was judged when you-
Now, you show me what they can do and what they cannot do. That's county-owned property, and we're digging a hole on granite property with our employees and our equipment. What is illegal about that?
You used the employees the last time that y'all did that collection? There was-
See, one of the problems Jeff kept telling me-
You were judge-
No, let me tell you what.
We didn't, we didn't bring it to court.
One of the problems Jeff kept telling me he was having, having with roads, he says, "Barbara, once I'm sent to do something, somebody pulls me off and sends me somewhere else, or there's a crisis, or they pull me off my road and bridge duties." And I did not realize it was happening, okay? I mean-
Well, I don't know who pulls them off, I asked him, every time I talked to him, Jeff has always been outstanding at taking care of my precinct.
But-
I have no problem with Jeff at all.
He can't hire anybody?
Road and bridge has statutory duties, just like you do, can you go and work any office you want?
Individual Commissioner has no control over it at all.
Oh, but the judge does?
No, that's what I'm telling you, it has to come in here, that's why I was telling you.
Well, she stopped what he had started.
He didn't have the authority to start it.
Why didn't anybody stop-
He's in charge of that operation.
He used two people over there, nobody stopped.
But Jeff, Jeff, Jeff is not a handyman.
It's been shut, closed for how many days?
Jeff is not a handyman, he's road and bridge.
It's been closed for a week or two weeks, something like that, and there's nothing, my hands are tied, the only other guy that, the only other guy that can run it that already knows-
That's enough of this stuff, we need to get back to business and get back on the agenda. But I wanna ask something also, I understood that there was a problem with burning inside the city limits.
There is.
So this property will be inside the city limits, 'cause it belongs to the city?
It is.
So how are we gonna burn?
Well, historically, we burn all the time, we just got controlled by T C Q, but I guess we can just, we don't follow rules.
So what are we gonna do? If we cannot burn it, what are we gonna do?
We gotta just do something else, but you can't continue following.
Okay, what are we gonna do, Bob?
You're just giving me problems, 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 I want some solutions.
All this stuff has to be separated.
I wanted to-
You're supposed to answer the question.
You never have a solution, you never have one, all this stuff has to be separated, that's not gonna be done in three hours. Not one tire can burn, not, you can't burn those computers, you can't burn that stuff. That's not gonna be separated in three hours, I don't care how big of a hole you dig or what you do. When those people come in and if Jesse's taking money or something, they're behind his back, throwing stuff out there.
What do you suggest me do, Judge?
But it's more than a three-hour job.
I already had discussed that with Jesse, it was about a three or four-hour job, I had discussed with Jesse, I was gonna come-
It's ridiculous to talk about this, because you can't burn it anyway.
I already had talked, I'm sorry, Mr. Busman, I already had, I already had talked to Jesse and everything, I told him, "Let us dig this pit and everything, then I'm gonna come back to Commissioners Court and I'm gonna go ahead and try to see if we can get a heavier piece of equipment out there, rent it or something, where we could take care of the job." And if Jeff didn't have time to split the piles and everything, we were gonna do that. I don't come to Commissioners Court, man, like a retarded Commissioner, you know, or, I don't know what I'm doing. I check everything that I'm trying to do before I do it. You know, I talked, and I did, yes, I talked with some people from the city and we were maybe gonna be able to burn out there, pretty sure, like ninety-nine percent and everything, as long as it was clean wood. And I explained all that to Jeff. And then, like I said, I'm not mad at you or anything, Judge, the only thing is, I wanted to get this out and clear and everything, and when I was on vacation, I took a vacation for four years, I found out that Jesse was quitting. And it was all, it came back all regarding to where all the pit and all of that.
Yes, sir.
May I make a statement, Judge?
Yes, sir.
We're saying that the city does not allow y'all to burn, and that's not true. I had that worked out a long time ago, that the city would allow the county to burn at its collection station as long as it had the authorization permission from T C Q. And I was assured we-
With no time limit.
Now, tires you cannot burn nowhere anywhere.
And that's what we kept getting in trouble for, repeatedly, we've gotten violations from T C Q for burning tires.
No, tires you cannot burn, but everything else you can burn, as long as you've got permission.
But you're giving them the ordinance.
And we had a legal pit out there, and there was a legal pit out there, which I've already had talked about, that's why I said, I don't come up here like a dumbass, excuse my language, and try to do something, and I don't know what I'm doing.
There's an ordinance, but you'll be able to-
Jesse did not know there was tires in there when he burned.
As long as it's covered by T C Q by permission from them, or check the tires.
But Jesse, Jesse didn't know that there was tires in there when he burned. I mean, somebody had thrown a bunch of wood on tires, and we were reported by one of the city employees, T C Q, and it came back, and I talked to Jesse. I, I called you and I called Jesse, I said, "Jesse, did you know there were tires in there?" And he says, "I didn't know." He said, "Everybody had thrown that wood on top," he said, "I didn't know until the black smoke came out, but I was already, you know, done." And so, we were reported by a city employee, and that's why I, you know, I told, talked to James about that, because we got in trouble twice.
But we, we overcame all that, everything's fine, and we overcame all that. Now, we overcame that, I've always been real easy to work with the city and everything, I don't have a problem, and that's why I came to get the pit done. And I know we're beating the dead horse, but that's, that's the thing, I just wanted to know, Judge, and I wanted to ask Mr. Busman and everything, so in other words, we're assigned to these jobs, right? And then we'll keep on going, we're assigned to these jobs, right?
You're assigned to the job, and the thing is, though, that you can't order or ask Jeff to do anything that he's not supposed to do, that Commissioners Court has to do. I know it's been kinda loose here, but, uh, it's gonna take a while before it really sinks in, but Commissioners control collectively, control Jeff's duties, they can decide and change them. Within some of the petitions, but by statute, he is required to do certain things, and Commissioners Court, A, no Commissioner can, can do anything at all or ask Jeff to do anything that he has to do.
Commissioners or Judge?
Our Judge.
I'm just, make sure you put that in.
What I understand we're doing here, that she, the judge, I'm not taking that for the judge.
Oh, of course not, I, I know, you're, you're being evil.
Trying to. But the judge stopped doing, stopped Jeff doing something that he should not have been asked to do, because it's contrary to the statute that he has to work under. That's the way I understand this.
I understand.
So you're both good.
Right, yeah, I understand, yeah, I, it's not a problem with that.
Well, good intentions, Judge.
With good intentions, Busman, all right, we thank you, Judge, for stopping that before we got in trouble, but back to yours, nobody stopped you, right? When you used county employees and the judge was still the judge there, why didn't you stop him?
Let's get that clear on the record, so when I have this household hazardous waste event again, the third time, I need your permission and the court's permission to use it?
It's my permission to do anything. But you have, you have this on the-
But that's not on the agenda, but what, the only thing that happened, the reason this came up, is we were not the only people having problems with the road and bridge administrator, with all of our roads being, going down the pike and all this kinda stuff. And what happened is on this surf, and this is how I became knowledgeable, James, I didn't just go out to aim at you or do anything to you. What happened was, everybody, all the places were like, "Oh, our road and bridge, you know, we have a road and bridge department." People that weren't precincts people, they were all kind of asking questions. And they were like, "Why our road and bridge department's doing this, or our road and bridge department's doing this." And that's when I went to Mr. Busman, because people started answering on some of the system stuff, "The road and bridge is defined by statute and nobody should be pulling them off statute." So I went to Mr. B and I said, "Mr. Busman, look at this." I said, "Now, is this right or is this wrong?" He says, "Well, Barbara, they've always done it, so they're always gonna do it that way." Historically, doesn't make it right, and that's what I said, "Once I found out what we were doing was wrong," and this came back way prior, this is when we were moving from the annex, "Once I found out what we were doing was wrong," I said, "Jeff, you don't do that, because if he takes instruction from an individual Commissioner, it can pour down to the roads and stuff too, like it becomes favoritism or whatever." And I didn't want us to get in that bind. And if I didn't tell you, I mean, I call you a lot, you know I do, when something's wrong, and if I didn't tell you, or I'll text you and let you know if somebody's looking for you or what's going on. I did not do anything intentionally to harm you or to harm this county. I just told Jeff, "You can't, you can't do it, by statute, you're not supposed to leave road and bridge duties unless you have that permission." And that was it, and that was because Jeff was getting killed, and he was coming in here, and Jeff, you did tell me, you said, "Barbara, I'm pulled way too many different directions sometimes." And you said, "Everything becomes a crisis and I can't." And I said, "Well, look, I just got this stuff that you're not even supposed to be pulled off these duties, you're supposed to stay on your statutory duties unless it's defined by court to pull you off of those duties." And I didn't do anything to undermine you, to squash you, or to make you look bad.
Now, using the county employees on a day off, and I think the year of things on Saturday was not, so the red, road, road and bridge came and worked out there. Not to consider that was voluntary on their part, they were not asked to do that. Now, they might've been asked, but they could've done it voluntarily without anybody.
Yeah, they volunteered, but-
Right.
He still gave them comp time off, right?
Gave them off on Thursday or Monday.
And then we find out we're not supposed to be doing it, and then when we find out we're doing wrong, that's when we have to start correcting it. I can't go back and make this one right, I can't go, I can't, I can't make-
Am I looking at some jail time here, Bob?
I can't, I can't, uh, I, we can't go back and fix it, you can only start from the beginning.
Honestly, we, we had decided for, you had mentioned about not using-
About ten years.
The judge mentioned not to use none of Jeff's guys or anything for anything, like building or anything, it's been a long time, like last year, right, sometime?
No, it was right after the annex. When we moved into the annex, two employees got hurt, moving some stuff, and I don't wanna go into that. Two employees got hurt, I don't wanna go into it, I think we're done.
May I make one more statement?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I, I came over this morning hoping to get this problem resolved with your collection station. Because as I drive up there every day, I see citizens, whether it be Karnes City or Karnes County dumping trash over the fence before, "No, we're gonna have trash in front of the gates, it's creating a major problem." I did not know I was gonna step into a hornet's nest. I just came by to organize the city's assistance, what can we do to get this problem resolved? Get this bickering to stop so we can get back to what we're supposed to do. Do you want us to take over the collection station or what? Because it is creating a major problem, and I don't want T C Q on our back again, so.
No, they make you, they make you alone.
We can, I hope we can resolve that.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, Charlie.
The problem with the collection station, I was reflecting on our county roads, we're done picking trash up, so, I'm in bags.
So is anything, it shot you in the foot?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because now I'm, now I'm spending time up picking trash up.
The litter's not in there.
I mean, that two or three hours just digging that pit, where now we're picking up trash on hundreds of county roads, it just doesn't make sense.
You're right, Carl, it's never been there, that's why it's been a little bit.
Well, when that thing is closed, believe me, they drive up there-
I'm just telling you, once we found out we were doing wrong, we tried to abide by the statute. If, if we don't wanna use the statutes, we can throw the book away, we're just gonna have to deceive the rest of the nation.
Okay, well, I guess I was in violation using, how many employees did I use?
But we didn't know, Carl, I didn't know.
But you were still a violation, 'cause the law's been set up for fifty years or forty years, so no-
And how do you know it's legal?
Nobody had, nobody had-
I think it's time to stop the effort.
That's why I didn't know.
What do they say, negligence, you're stupid because of the law, that don't make no excuse, right? Whatever it is, that doesn't, that doesn't matter. But it's the same way as a-
Judge, would it be possible that the Commissioners are given a copy of the statute so we might-
They have access to it, I mean, by being a Commissioner, they get all that information when they go to training.
And we do not have to say it and listen to this.
But they get all that information when they go to training, they get the same information I get, I go to the same training they go to.
You can call Reasign, Judge, let's try to find some truth here.
Well, I understand you tried this problem brought about, because Barbara checked on the law, and she called Jeffrey and told him, "You can't do that, it's against the law." And Jeffrey didn't call James, and Barbara didn't call James and tell him the same thing, so communication broke down, and then James left and he was out of town, just.
Is that where it's at?
And basically, that's where the communication-
That's basically where, that's basically what happened. And that ba, that's basically what happened, yeah.
But the agenda item is for Commissioners Court to authorize road and bridge to do this project. Commissioners Court can do that authorization and be within statutory duties for the road and bridge.
Right, I understand.
Huh? Exactly, so let's do the agenda item.
It wasted an hour.
No, I, it's not, it's not wasted.
So Jeffrey, will you have time to do this, to dig this pit?
I don't, but I can make time, because I don't wanna pick trash on the side of the road either.
But if you don't have time, it'd be easier to leave him and get somebody to do it, James, and have two people working at once.
We have to amend the budget.
Well, can we amend it, you have that on here?
Yeah, I have that on there.
I mean, that way we have two things working at once, you don't have everything, you know, roads aren't breaking down, T C Q, whatever, we're working on two things at one time.
That's why I have it on here, just in case, if he tells me that he can't, that's the reason I have it on here, that we can amend the budget, we go ahead and hire someone else.
She just said it's illegal, so let's hire a contractor.
It's not illegal.
I just don't wanna, that's the reason I got this on here, Judge, too, is because I knew we'd come, I knew we'd come to an understanding, exactly, all of us. And I got this on there, too, in case Jeff tells me, "You just cannot do it or anything," you know, that we can, I have it on there, so amend the budget and everything, and hopefully, you know, God send us Jesse back, but I don't know if Jesse even wants to come back after all of this, 'cause he's sick and tired of this too. I have no idea if that man wants to come back. But, you know, can't, well, we're on item number eleven. Do you have time to do it?
Well, we can make time to do it, yeah. I got, I got, we got, I got fence lines we're working on, I got, I got the weight station to work on, and I got a bridge waiting on, two bridges waiting on me, like, we got plenty.
I need a lot of- Well, if y'all, if y'all think that we shouldn't use Jeff, I'm asking Jeff, I'm asking Jeff, he's the one that knows out there the roads better than all of us right now, 'cause he runs all four precincts, not just sits up here in court and looks at it. He actually is out there doing it. You know, I know you're trying to save the county money, Jeff, and I always, I, I always applaud you for all your actions, and you know that, I never have an argument with you or nothing like that. But I know you're trying to save the county three or four thousand dollars, dig that pit twenty-five hundred, whatever it may be. But, I mean, I don't want you to put yourself out of, you really don't have time, Jeff, if we have to amend the budget, Mr. Busman thinks it's an emergency item, we can do that. Not to put you out of your time, but if you do, you can go do it in three hours, or four hours, or five hours, or whatever, and save the county.
I think it's a pit, thanks.
Well, that's when you were gonna go out there, me, you and Jesse were gonna go ahead and go out there and meet and figure out how big we're gonna put it, probably thirty by forty, maybe ten-foot deep? Something like that, with, you know, edges on it?
You know, we don't, you don't know what kind of bind we're in, I mean, we don't know how long it's actually gonna take.
That's why I'm here, that's why I'm here asking Jeff, 'cause Jeff knows-
And he's on a roll with roads?
I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm asking Jeff here, because I'm, he's smarter than you and all of us put together, I ran the roads for eight years, but right now, right now, 'cause you're running four precincts, there's no way we know what you got to do out there, nobody out here does, all of us together don't know, but you know, you're the one that knows if you can do it or not. And I don't wanna put you in a bind, and you know that, Jeff, if you can do it, then we'll amend the budget, Mr. Busman says it's okay.
Just like I said, my deal is, we're picking trash today, because I got people complaining about piles and tires getting dumped out and, and piles and trash bags being out on the side of the road and roofing material laying and ditches and, and sheet rock laying, so, you know, I'm spending the money to fix the problem too, and, you know. So, y'all take it, but where y'all need to take it.
All right, I suggest that we approve both of these, prove it, and Jesse goes out there and serves his with James and see what size of pit he needs to dig, and see what he, if he can get there, and if he can't, we approve, amend the budget, to hire a contractor to do it. Prove both of them and then let them make the choice.
You're not on the agenda, well, they are on it.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't stated exactly, to make sure, to cover any option.
Well, I think, I mean, the situation is such, if Jess, Jeff either spends money picking up trash or spend a little bit of time, quite a bit less, hopefully, they're digging a pit, now, dig the pit.
A lot less.
Yes.
I mean, but this didn't get like this overnight, so when are we gonna dig this pit? I mean, this, this dump has been an issue for like the past three or four months.
Whenever.
I, we can, we can pull off the job.
Jesse's been calling me for a long time, making messages.
I know we got, I got a lot of working stuff, but this is a problem, it's a Karnes County problem, I work for the county. Uh, we got a dozer sitting, running, it's running right now, but I can pull it off for half a day and we can get this job done, you know, so.
When can you do it?
We can pull off, I can do it tomorrow morning, if we pull off and do it.
Tomorrow morning?
Yep.
So y'all, I'm gonna meet y'all there in the morning, what time? Eight, nine, seven?
I can have this talking prior to that.
Four o'clock in the morning?
I mean, but I'm just telling y'all, this is-
What, what time?
I'll be there at eight, I can be there at eight, bud.
Okay, so-
By the time we get the dozer loaded and backed up, because I got it all pretty close to Walfer, crossing.
Well, thank you again, Jeff, thank you again. I'll make the motions to approve allowing court standing, we want to reuse county equipment to dig a burn pit at Citizens Collection Station, or, oh, that's it.
Can I say anything?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carried. The next one is to hire, amend the budget to hire independent contractor, if approved, and we don't need to do that now. And the other one is to discuss approve, disapprove, to hire a replacement for the Citizens Collection Station operator's position, and this is James, I guess.
That one, I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to interrupt. Okay, this one's mine right here, the only reason I put this one on here, like I said, Jesse does a fabulous job out there, he knows what he's doing out there and everything, I know he has a lot of problems and everything. I told him honestly before, I go, "Why do you stay?" I told it like that, but he wants to help the county out, he's been doing it for thirty-something years with the county, and he's just there, you know, he's basically there for us, you know, I know that. So Jesse, I don't know if this is proper, but would you come back with us, or?
Yeah, if we can cooperate together and get the thing going.
But, and now Jesse, you know this is not a new problem, though, this has been going on for months, that you've been calling over here telling me, "I have issues, Barbara, I have issues," and I kept asking you to call James. This is not new, this didn't happen since the dump closed Thursday, it didn't happen since you quit, this is ongoing. So, you know, we, I'd love to have you back, Jesse, but there's just not a lot that, when you call me, now do you see why? 'Cause none of this needed to happen here today, none of this needed to happen, it could've been solved when you started calling four months ago or five months ago. But thank you for coming back, you do an excellent job, and we love you.
You will, he hasn't, he hasn't-
He said, he said he would.
If everything, if everything's good, we're all gonna cooperate, right? Okay, so then, meaning that I don't need, we can pass this number thirteen, if you're coming back?
Oh, no, thirteen.
Mr. Busman, can we pass this number thirteen, if he's coming?
We just go with the laws with the presentation, I'm very familiar with that.
Yeah, we'll pass number thirteen, thank you, Jesse.
Like I said, this, this did not need to play out in court today, 'cause this has been an ongoing problem for the last four months.
It's been for years, why even took it over, the tires were there, so it's been an ongoing problem for years.
That needs to be addressed also, we need to address that out there, it needs to be, 'cause we're getting ready to get fined, we've been warned a few times, and if we don't do it, and we get fined, just don't.
Judge, I was in the collection station, uh, helped, ran it there for a while, but what Jesse's gonna need, and y'all really need to consider it, y'all need to get an extra person there to give him a hand. Jesse's got the paperwork he's doing, he's collecting, he's got pickups pulling in, you need somebody there in the back, make sure they put the proper trash where it belongs and where it needs to go. proper trash where it belongs and where it needs to go.
And that's how we get trouble, is people throw stuff in there and he's not looking.
That's gonna be on the next agenda. Me and Jesse talked about it, about seeing if y'all can get another guy.
But don't discuss it here, because then everybody's kinda saying, "He's on the next agenda." It looks like everybody's agreeing with you. We can't do that. That's just...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, even if it's done historically, if it's illegal, we're not gonna do it.
I discussed that with Jesse earlier when we talked.
Number fourteen is to discuss approve, disapprove, the sale of land donated to Karnes County by Frank A., a Lennox and wife, Dorothy Epple Lennox, and advertising the sale of that certain tract or parcel of land situated in Karnes County, Texas, as described in volume five thirty-eight, page nine sixty-six, Karnes County deed records, and the authors you bought.
Yes, the lady, husband and wife came to see me by buying the land that Mr. O'Niz donated to the county. Now, I don't... I think I went over and looked this up, but I think it may not be the right one. Because, so I'd like to get this just passed it and put it back on, because I wanna make sure... I think this is what they brought me, but I wanna make sure that we've got the right one, because I know that I did a deed where the Lennox gave a piece of land to the city, to the county also. And that was with after ninety-nine, because this is in eighty-three. So, and I didn't even look at that. It's my fault. Take their blame. Uh, just pass it. They just want... They wanna buy it, but we gotta get it on advertisement, so they can not buy it, but in their bids. Does that make sense?
All right. I looked through the description, the bigger description, and it looks like this here, and that looks like County Road three fifty-eight, Highway eighty, and then it loops around like this. And that's exactly what the description looks like.
I'm not planning to...
And I don't know. I'm just... We don't wanna pass it. We can sell that street.
This is go back to the...
There may be a different description. It may not be the right description, what the portable land is there for, and take no action. So...
I'll go back over to the clerk's office and just pass it. Look it up again.
You're next, Ms. Frankie, tax collector report.
First, you take this here.
This is any of the month of March, collection for the county, four million fifty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents, percentage of collection ninety-five point eight oh eight two. Delinquent for the county, total collection thirty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents, the percent of collection eighteen point one three oh one. Road and Bridge Special, year-to-date collection five hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-two cents, percentage of collection ninety-six point zero one one zero. For the delinquent collection, two thousand thirty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents, the percent of collection nineteen point eight seven seven nine. Fire Emergency District, year-to-date collection three hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-four cents, the percent of collection ninety-five point eight seven four seven. Delinquent, one thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and thirty-two cents, the percentage of collection twenty-five point eight eight one four.
Thanks, Ms. Frankie. I'd like to discuss examine issue number sixteen.
Just a correction that needs to be made on page... I have two copies. On page two, on the bottom of the Road and Bridge Special, it wasn't until after we closed the books and I was balancing a bank statement that I realized that we had receded into the system a CD twice. So the cash line should be three hundred eighty-nine thousand fifty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents for a total balance of four hundred nineteen thousand four oh three oh five on your Road and Bridge Special. So, that's what's actually in the Road and Bridge Special.
Bye. On down here, then, the closing balance was what now on Road and Bridge Cash Special?
Road and Bridge Special. On the cash?
Yeah. Where are we changing? Did you want me to change it on here?
Yes.
No. Why are you shaking your head?
Oh, because we're just...
It'll be reflected in next month's activity.
Yes. It's just kinda FYI, for you not to think that you have that much in there. But other than that, well, I didn't see anything else on there. But you'll see that change is on next month. And I have my annual conference next week, so I'll be gone up here Monday, but then I'll be gone for the rest of the week. But Julie will be in my office. And shredding, we have set April twenty-sixth for shredding. So if there's any boxes, I think I've kinda asked several times, so I think we've got everything that we need on those.
I'll make the motion that we approve, Buy's monthly project report.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
And just one last thing. We have Relay for Life, April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. We do have a Karnes County team. If anybody's willing to be a team member or donate, come see me.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition or queries? You approved to donate and join the team, right, Bob? Is that what you said? You approved to her to donate and to join the team, right? Is that what you said?
We do buy as much as we can, but I said that, yeah. But the treasure report, that matter of the treasure report also should be... Motion should be to accept and file. There's no way they can approve, because they don't have the information to approve, bye.
Well, mine, the auditor's doesn't have to be accepted by treasurer.
Mine does.
Right. Accepted and ordered filed.
Well, that's the way the wording has always been. So do we need to change the wording?
It's always been like that.
We don't use the book here, Bob. It's not a big deal. That local government code that's obtained according to count.
We rewrote it, it's all right.
Yeah, eventually we'll get caught. Number seventeen is payment of bill that you want.
So when you do that, there is an error there. Underneath anybody, you might be possible to approve it.
No, I know.
So do we need to change the wording on it or not to have it approved correctly, Bob?
It's not approved. It's just accepted and ordered filed.
Okay, so do we need to say instead of accept and order filed, discuss, approve, disapprove?
Yeah.
And how long have you been county attorney, and you're just now bringing this to our attention? Are you doing this wrong?
Well, it takes me a while to catch things like that.
Twelve years?
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
I think I remember it and mentioned it probably several years ago.
I don't recall that, but I've slept a few times since then.
You took in medicine today.
Okay, we're paying bills now.
Still a big deal, but it's a problem.
If it's a problem, then it is a big deal, because it's the last thing I need, is somebody to hang it over my head again, because my report's not correct.
We'll get it fixed.
So can you please correct that next time, Judge?
We will soon.
Thank you.
Well, but the whole thing is, we just have to start using...
Can we pay bills?
Yeah, we can pay bills.
I think I know who to change the line.
There is nothing out of the ordinary in this cycle, because it's only been basically a week since the last time we paid bills, so there's a very short stack. Total expenditures in this cycle is sixty-six thousand two hundred and two dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills up for me.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye?
Opposing aye? No.
No, I said Carl before I said any opposed. You didn't answer.
Again?
Yeah. They're hiding.
Yeah, sometimes I do that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition? Question, carry. Number eighteen, you wanna just do yours while you're up there a little?
Sure. Y'all have the auditor's monthly report for March two thousand and twelve in your packet.
Okay.
On the last page, among items of interest, again, I'm showing you the total funds that were available as of March thirty-first, the total funds that were invested, and the total non-invested funds. An investment was issued again on April second, so all available funds were invested as of April second. It showed you the certificates that matured and were acquired in March. As I brought to your attention in her treasurer's report, the corrected balances on the Road and Bridge Special, the reason we aren't actually changing the printout is because those corrections were made the first part of April, so they will be reflected in April's report by the treasurer and my office. And they were... There's two different ones. One was the duplication of a receipt, and then the other one was a reversal in a receipt. The principal was actually receded into the interest income line and the interest into the CD line. So there were some errors, but they will be corrected or have been corrected this week.
Okay. You know what? Can we just... Since we started that, that was kind of a... We'll just get to number nineteen, okay? Report from Road and Bridge, Jeb. Report from auditor's office, that was Alana. Jeb?
This is the... Speed on it.
This is...
This is phase, phase one of the wrecking truck. Phase one, if we...
That's gonna be total cost, and if you look on the backside, I did leave a bumper for us to, um... A little money to be laid aside. We're looking at sixty-one miles of road. It dropped down from the previous. By putting the trucking back in, we dropped that, gonna be serving sixty-one miles of road. And we get any more rain like we got this last week, a week ago, that big rain, we're fixing roads right now. We're still playing with some damages that we got, trying to get them repaired. We did receive quite a bit of damage. It was just pipes couldn't handle the mild water that fell.
What part of the county got it worse?
Right down the tube, about the middle, right through here. Where the roads were kinda sandy-like material, that's called the worst part. Black dirt wasn't quite as bad, and the good base material, it held up, but where roads were, the sandy roads, they were washed bad. We were moving dirt back up hills and places.
How many work orders is this, Jeffrey? And how, how timeframe?
They've got the dates on there. They've got the dates on it.
No, no, I see that, but you know what? To and from timeframe, I mean, that'd have to go through every one. Some of them, I mean, these are all this years?
Yeah, that's just January, from January to now.
Now, this is how many Road and Bridge complaints that we have?
Yeah. That's just complaints. And there's some work orders in there that are complete, something. So, yeah, there's... Non-catch-up in there, believe me. We got plenty of it. That's the reason I brought that forward, the OCLC, and I'll start bringing that, more of that, and give y'all more deals as we're working on stuff. We got walk-ins, we got phone calls. I got bombarded with phone calls about the crash. I got keep out, and I got touched out for the crash, and I didn't have nothing to do with it, but I still got in trouble for it. But...
Well, and one of the other things that would watch my attention when your two employees got hurt last time is our insurance does not cover employees. If they're taken off the job to do something else, and is that a statute without court approval? And we're gonna get in major trouble doing stuff like that. No use donating to county tax dollars to stuff like that.
Right. But we're working on three fifty-four outside of town here right now, where we got quite a bit of damage on it over here, past auction barn, so the hammers can get in and out. That road was got pretty bad, and we gotta set some pipes in there, too, so we're working on that. And fixing on getting started on the weight station. We're gonna start trying to get that going here pretty quick. Hoping tomorrow I can break away a backhoe and we start scraping, and then put a couple of trucks on and start hauling. I got a EOG, thank them. They're helping us in the Gillette area. They're fixing some roads for us as we speak. I made agreements with them. They got good operators and stuff. They're using the county loader for loading material off of their property, bringing it on to the county roads. It's not costing us nothing but fuel, and they're not even... Not if I can even put the fuel in our machine. But we're helping them load it, and then they're hauling out the roads. I had a couple of trucks running, but I had pulled trucks off today because I'm using trucks. We gotta set some pipes and get some pipes cleaned out before the next... I'm trying to keep a couple of trucks running with the oil companies to kinda help us. There's a lot of them helping us. We had a company that just went into a... A lot of the old employees are... Went on, and they got new employees. I'm working with new employees with Conical Phillips, so that's a big change for me, and I'm getting to introduce some new people with them, so that's a major step there. And trying to get these guys to work on the same pace that the old ones work on. It's gonna be a little transaction. It's taking quite a bit of time. Working with Murphy yet on some... I don't know where I'm gonna wind up with them, but we're trying to do some negotiating with these oil companies to give us as much help as we can get, because they're our main key to for help. This material's expensive, as y'all can see. Every mile that I can get hauled out by them to help us, that's dollars in our pocket. Anything else?
Jeff, at the top of the page, it says District One, that's precinct one?
No, District One, I got... The county's split up in two different districts. Rick Zylupka has one district, and Alvin Hans has the other district. And I have all four of them. So it kinda got it split up, where the guys help me. They do quite a bit of running. They do a lot of labor. When I can go to one place, they'll take care of their deals, and they try to get the work done. And we get into disputes sometimes with the two departments, because he's trying to pull his way, and he's trying to pull his way, and we ain't got enough people and enough equipment to go around the hood, but we're getting it done.
Thanks a lot, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Carl, did you have anything?
No.
James?
Oh, yeah, I have mine.
Hey, I met last week, Thursday, with Chris Michelle and David Vogel in the annex. We went over a fifteen-item punch list. We just voted to close this out. David Vogel said, "This is okay with me, if I can settle it with Chris, who I'm meeting with today at one thirty, see when I have it done, what has to be done." He said, "Is it be all right with him?" He said, "David Vogel said, 'I'll come down if you want me to.'" We'll see. There are two of the roof leaks in the annex. Some of them were windows, and they'll try to resolve it with the manufacturer and whatever. Two of the roof leaks were from exhaust fan. And I discussed it with Ken Myers, the roofing company, and there's some low drawings of high intensity flashing, and we agreed on that, that there's airspace from exhaust and everything. So, hopefully, we'll take care of that. And then the District Clerk's office is the van fan in that area. The sheriff said that there's a roof leak in his office. He thought it was a... Someone set a teaklass on his desk, and it made condensation, but basically thinks, and it looks like two little spots on the ceiling. Have you noticed them? Clark, here, water, sheriff, in your office, there's two spots on the ceiling.
Yes, so there was water leaking for several days.
On my desk. So it's... At first, he didn't know it was a leak. He just thought it was a condensation.
Somebody came and set a teaklass down, but after I moved every little paperwork, every day I kept coming in, and I just... Then all of a sudden, I looked up, and there was water dripping from the roof right up top of my desk, right by my computer. So I moved a lot of documents.
Anyway, we're addressing all those with the roofing company. Condensation again in the county clerk's office, and talked to Chris about that.
Does she have leaks? Do you have leaks, too?
It's not, it's not leaks. There's... It's just dripping from the ceiling, but it's not coming from the outside.
I don't...
But it's not a given, is it?
With the air-conditioned unit, and it's always just been that one area.
It's just that one section.
And with the air-conditioned unit that is not draining, de-condensate, and lets evaporate and blowing it back up on the ceiling, we don't know. But the county will be checking that out. They said it wasn't a roof leak, and it didn't appear to be a roof leak, but the first time we got that. But anyway, they're addressing that. The floor of the break room is being replaced. They were doing moisture tests, and of course, they had other stuff scheduled. They didn't come back right away. They said, "Well, let's just let it sit there a week or so." So they have it back in about two weeks now.
Set up.
So, and the break room, they replaced the floor. They probably had moisture underneath, kind of noted that they put it. And so, they, when they... They showed me pictures of it. They said, "This shows there's moisture, and that shows there's moisture." So they scraped all of the lever and the filler off the floor, and then put a new filler on, and seater on. And they checked it, and they weren't putting a note on next day, and I said, "No, I'll fit more, because you should check it." So I said, "Okay, we'll wait a week," and then they had other stuff scheduled, like next week. And I haven't heard from them, so I'll find out today from Chris what they do.
Pete, we couldn't stain that concrete instead of putting a note in back?
Well, it probably could have been, but anyway, they're gonna put their note in back on it.
Same kind?
No, custom. Should be the same note you put back on. The fresh air fans, there's still a problem with that. They've ordered some different pulleys put in there. They ordered some, and they weren't right, so they're working on that. Courtroom judge's bench has been cut down, and it's accepted. Well, I hope now. Witness chair has been put in. Still need security on the outside door. Is there anything we're talking, we can help about on that, or we're gonna get by the... Or are we going to get by the way it is without having to get over there?
We can't really get by the way it is, Pete, right now, for a simple reason, when TDC brings it in. We got AG Court going on this morning over there. I've got one standing by the door and one, I think I have one inmate, I've got to shuffle back and forth. But now, it's still not, you still can't get to the outside, and there's something else that brought my attention the other day. Other than, I talked to Warden Bright, he still wants to put that screen over the door so people. We're not really worrying about people running out, we're worrying about people taking people away from us. Because we're right there on Calvert, we're less than probably ten steps to the road. And that's something else he brought up too the other day. They usually come in kind of early, we've got a name of people coming in early too. I've got to get out there on day of court, I've been talking to my people, I'm trying to coordinate some stuff. We've got to put out cones so they can back up and seal that area with officers. Even though they bring the inmates, when the weather's permitting, through the back door, the hallway, where the two handicap restrooms are, they bring them through there. But you still got to have somebody on that front because of that door. They have to have somebody, not four, like I said, we had somebody another day, two-hundred-and-forty-four years, he didn't have nothing to lose. And that's what it is, and that landman was parking there, and they brought that to my attention because I am courthouse security. But that's what we've got to do, we've got to take probably make three or four spots, put a van in there with arms, TDCJ guards, doing somebody that they feel threatened, that could be taken away from. And most time right now, we're using two to three deputies to work that court. For the simple reason, there was no bathrooms inside the, or inside the courtroom, we have to take them out there, check out the bathrooms every time that you have a deputy sitting on a bathroom, which you can't do. So it's kind of, they're working off eight to ten TDCJ, I'm working two to three guards, or two or three deputies, baiters or whatever, at the time. So it's not very, we're making it secure as possible, but the Warden Bright, he said that we still need to secure that door with some kind of screen mesh. That they can have to either hit the mesh or, you know, run a vehicle through it or whatever. So close to the road, we have to actually block the road so they can't get to the door.
If we got, if we got expansion metal and welded some washers and it had the whole thing galvanized and hanging all some pins put up there and above, something like that, I mean, I don't, they have to come up and tell me what we.
Well, that's kind of what we was talking about the other day for a simple reason, and here we go again, about the fire. You know, if we got fire, that is an exit to the outside, but we need to have it where you have to jerk it up and pull it off to move it. You know, I mean, have it light enough to the point that one person can grab it, pull it up and move it. You know, just for like certain people coming in from the outside.
If TDCJ or whoever it is has to tell us that they have to use tactics.
Right. And we, we're still in a dilemma there, they try to keep them in the vehicle, sometime they can't keep them in the vehicle, we're still talking about the old cage they used to have on the second floor, we've been there a lot. Me and Robbie back in the day, keeping, I mean, violent inmate from TDCJ, they still don't have a place to keep them. So they try to keep them inside the vehicle until which time they can bring them out, but it's just, like I said, when you do that, you got them in public and dragging them back and forth. And I have no place to put that.
If we could put that cage right in front of that door, maybe open it outside and wave it down on front porch.
Oh, okay.
Good idea.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Pete, anything else? You offered a solution. Were you the last one? Okay, I think so, because Tracy's not here today. So we're going to go back to number eighteen, and that's your report of fees, fines and money collected from the following departments, County Clerk, Carol LeTreville, here's some of them, here it is. Her grand total was ninety-five thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents, and her total for the month was seventy-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. You wanted me to read that, but you looked it up, you're right.
That's right.
The district clerk. Vi, you're going to have to help me on this because you're going to tell me what she, I mean, she writes all this stuff on here, I don't know what it means, I don't know what her, County RMF, clerk RMF collected.
So Robbie, back there.
I don't know what all the abbreviations and stuff. You might not, I mean, because I know yours is usually broken down.
She collected twelve thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. The county retained eleven thousand, nine-thirty-nine eighty-five. Um, she needs. Does that sound right, Robbie?
That was your civil report, right?
That was your civil. Criminal? Nine thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-four cents?
That would be retained, yes.
Retained.
That was a lot of restitution.
Yeah, it was like forty-nine thousand, two-sixteen, one-twelve, paid on restitution.
Right.
See, I know y'all deposit that, I don't know what it means when they bring up, yeah, they know what they're talking about.
Yeah, that dude has something, on this trash committee, I know Tracy has somebody in his precinct, and I, I do too, I have Miss Wood, she's here now. But I need somebody in each one of your precincts to be on the committee. Have y'all found anybody?
No, I haven't found anyone, I just, one guy I got called in.
The gentleman that agreed to be on it in mine, and I guess it's Robert Rosales, I mean, if y'all okay with that, he's my uncle, but he said that he would be more than happy to, I don't want to, you know what, you know what I mean? Watch our bus, right? But he said he would be more than happy to do it in mine.
I, I, I think we'll, we'll go ahead and lead and just keep looking.
Okay.
Talk to my father-in-law.
What'd he say?
And maybe, he may be up there before he got him.
But yeah, I have him, he said that, just put his name in there.
The next one is county attorney. And she has up here restitution.
She has?
Um, Ms. Crabtree, she's one of the.
I was like, Bob.
She does the hot check thingy.
Actually, call her, she.
Total money's collected from one-one-twelve to three-thirty-one-twelve is fifteen thousand, fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. And by three-thirty-one-eleven last year, she had connected, collected sixteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and thirty-one cents.
Just one other thing, we had a complaint on one of the roads out there, and I went out with the sheriff's people and took some pictures. And in the process, then I went to the Jeff's office yesterday to get copies of the employees, due to water lag. And one of the things I was told by people and they said, it's a problem because even though they get the permit, there have been, some companies have a permit, but the permit only allows it to drill under a road. And what they'd had done is they cut, they, they cut the road, it's still drilling under it. That, that avoids their permit. And I don't know how many of this has happened, but I'll just tell them at court, so that we need to take some steps, I think, to check on that.
And Jeff, I have another set of pictures and a letter in there for you, for you.
Whatever it's worth. They cut the road and they're only authorized to dig under it, they're trespassing. Because they're outside of their own permit. Question is, what do you want to do about it?
Put the county attorney.
Not today, but.
Put the county attorney on.
That's right.
If you guys have something, Bob, and we need to put something on the agenda, just let me know.
Well, I don't, they're, they're, I didn't ask them to do anything, I said, if they had time, maybe they could take a look to see how many times it's happened. But they need to report it, I asked them that they might report it if it happens. I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but cutting out roads is not good because of substance.
Okay, and the Justice of the Peace, we have none from then, and the Jibital Department, neither left it, I think, on my desk, and I don't know, everybody left it there, so. It's like this. Special projects, it's Sharon, Sharon, I see that you got it all on tap up here.
Have a few items. Thank you for allowing me to submit the rest of January, all of February, and March is, which I've also given.
Hey, 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 hey. I'm sorry, Sharon, I said.
In March, excuse me, in February, two thousand and twelve, determination development, permanent applications received were nineteen, a total of four hundred and fifty. On-site sewage facility permits for February, two thousand and twelve, were eight. Permits total three thousand, seven hundred. Inspector's portion is one thousand, four hundred and forty. TCQ portion is eighty. Counties received two thousand, one hundred and eighty out of this three thousand, seven hundred. In March, two thousand and twelve, determination development applications, a total of twenty-one were received for a total of four hundred and seventy-five. On-site sewage facility applications, eleven, four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Inspector's portion, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty. TCQ's portion is one hundred and ten. And the county will receive two thousand, nine hundred and sixty out of the four thousand, nine hundred. Friday, I received an email from ACOG stating that Rick, Governor Rick Perry had a public safety telecommunication week for April eighth. I'd like to read the proclamation, I don't stutter too much. The state of Texas Office of the Governor, the men and women who serve the public safety telecommunications, such as nine-one-one operators and dispatchers, are dedicated to saving lives. They respond to Texans in time of great need, and their specialized skills and calm, caring presence are invaluable to the Lone Star State. The Commission of the State of Emergency Communicators work with local and state governments to ensure reliable access to emergency telecommunications services. To highlight the invaluable role of public safety telecommunications commissioners, the commission designates a week in April for awareness campaign. At this time, I encourage all Texans to extend their appreciation to public safety telecommunications. Their diligent efforts ensure to help and on the way when, to ensure the help is on the way when we need it most. Therefore, I, Rick Perry, Governor of Texas, do hereby proclaim April eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, to be Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. They have sent a proclamation to Commissioner's Court. To all dispatchers and to the sheriff. With a Fiesta pin. Each year it's a little something, cool, you. Thank you. Sheriff. I'm going to hand the sheriff the rest of them, so he can distribute to his dispatchers and jailers and various officers.
Sure.
That's when you go to Fiesta, you know, you bark a little bit, maybe.
And I want to make publicly my operators, my jailers, my dispatchers, that they're doing one hell of a job. As you know, in the last few weeks, we've had tornadoes, we've had major wrecks, we've had floods. And out of them dispatchers that I've had, and the people operating the jail that helped, and the phone calls coming in, they've done a outstanding job. The only thing bad, I'm competing just like everybody else with the oil field, I've lost a newcomer, and I lost an old one just the other day that helped us through this flood the other night. So he resigned to go to bigger and better places. From the bottom of my heart, I mean, they are the lifeline. It brought my attention the other day that we lost power, all of Corns County lost power, Corn City did, and we dropped. Our generator kicked back on in less than two minutes, which that's a given, you're supposed to do that. My nine-one-one system was down for two minutes. The phones are down for over two hours because I just, me and Dwayne DeBose, after I got back from merchant management school the other day up there in Austin, we're meeting all these people, where they flung into action on a Fort Worth Dallas. Like all the mitigators, all the first responders, all the, everybody, the state, and everybody from Fort Worth sprung into action. I got to see something I never saw before, it was Shelby Shelby and Dwayne DeBose. We find out our phone system is hooked into the new annex. Back in the day, not too long ago, we still had it in the courthouse, guess what? My phone would go back off or go off and then we'd kick back on. I'm talking the three-nine, thirty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three numbers. Okay, they would go off and kick back on, my generator come on. Now, they're in the new annex building, that's where the brain is. I know we just put something in there the other day, Pete, me and Dwayne talked about that just like two days ago. There's a plug for a generator out there. I don't know how to fix this. I've done a lot of fixing here, piecemealing, working on grants with everybody, ACOG, the state. The, the phone brain is in the annex. I will lose, every time we have power loss in Corn, in Corn City, I will lose the capabilities of thirty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-nine, thirty-two and thirty-nine, thirty-three. Until the phone lines come back up to electricity, but my nine-one-one system is up and running when the generator kicks on. And that's through another ACOG grant, you helped me on sharing, to get that twenty-five thousand dollars to get that. And that, I had a generator there for twenty years, but we got that within the last two or three years. But I want to thank y'all again, thank you, Ms. Sharon, and the governor, because they are the lifeline. When you're in a bind, you can call nine-one-one, is that not true? So, and we're there. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Two more items. On the last chemist's court meeting, you had an issue on closing a portion of the county road, uh, twenty-two. And I'm, I'm asking you to have an item placed on the next agenda, to rename it, this way you do have a nine-one-one emergency, again, the closed section.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. And one more item is, I thank you for allowing me to go out for hire, just wanted to keep you updated. I have kept Mr. Schindel updated, and Ms. LaWanna was helping advise me on how to post. We did post to hire, we received one application, so I had talked to Ms. LaWanna to see if we could go out, or we'd have to do it the more expensive way, and posted and put it in the paper, which we had a holdup. We had a complaint from one of the oil companies in a manner of wanting to help us. They're complaining, they see a problem, but instead of getting upset about it, they wanted to help resolve it. So they did host a meeting at ACOG in San Antonio to inform them that they were going to have a mass request for addressing on old oil wells that were already existing that they took over from Hillport, that did not have a nine-one-one address. I, for the reason being in the past, asked for help to get that resolved. They, they with ACOG had come up with an idea to possibly, and I don't know if I need to put this on the agenda, the monies that, the nine dollars an hour for a part-time employee, possibly hire a temp, one that is capable to do the addressing. And that's not where Mr. Schindel and I had wanted to go with the temporary employee or the part-time employee, we wanted to do that with the special projects portion, not the nine-one-one. But due to the addressing issue, if they could assist us and get, get a temp for the nine dollars, then try to get caught up on the addressing. And after that, then I could go out and post for a part-time position. So we wouldn't be adding another amount of money to, to our budget that we really amended already. It's not an agenda item, it was just for updating you on that. Schindel does agree that we probably should take them up on their offer if they can get a temp for the nine dollars, and he can do the work, because I have no computers, no equipment for this new person. So they will be able to utilize some of ACOG's equipment to help us do some addressing. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, number twenty on the agenda's good, Sharon.
Oh, man, you.
All the members say aye?
Aye.
For the opposition, motion here. Thank you.
LaWanna wants to stay here a while, yeah.
I do.